Good evening. This is the meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals, Tuesday, June 13th, 2023, taking place at 120 Main Street, North Andover, Mass. I guess I will read. We're still under... Pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, this meeting of the North Andover Zoning Board of Appeals will be conducted in person and via remote means in accordance with applicable law. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with the right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website at www.northandoverma.gov. For this meeting, in-person attendance of members of the public and the board members will be permitted. Members of the public who wish to watch the meeting live may do so on their television by turning to Comcast Channel 8 or Verizon Channel 26, or online at www.northandovercam.org. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on the Town of North Andover website an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. If the public would like to participate in the public hearings but not attend the meeting in person, please email your questions or comments prior to or during the meeting to jbattersby@northandoverma.gov. That is J-B-A-T-T-E-R-S-B-Y at northandoverma.gov. The question and comment will be read during the proceedings and responded to accordingly. Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited, and just as for all.
We have the acceptance of the minutes for the May 9th, 2023 minutes.
I move that we accept the minutes.
My second.
Okay. Minutes are accepted.
We need a vote.
Oh, sorry. I always forget that part. Always. Can I have a... You know, can I have a vote, please? Nanas, aye.
Aye.
Easy enough. We're gonna try and move this along for everybody. And we have the continued public hearing on 335 Salem Street. So what do we got? I got some new paperwork. Tell me what we're doing, where we're at, what happened, what we found.
Again, Mark Johnson, Representative, and this is the third month in a row we're here, so it's good to see everybody again. I understand you're not meeting next month, so no matter what, we won't be here next month.
Let's hope this is the last.
And we're hoping this is gonna be the final meeting. Just by way of a recap, we started this on April 11th, and we presented the request for finding any alternative of variance, and specifically, this petition, both petitions relate to the language of the bylaw as to the lot area, contiguous land area, and whether or not it needs to be identified both as a well and resource area in accordance with the Wetland Bylaw and the Town of North Andover and the Wetland Protection Act. So we got hung up at the first meeting on what the "and" meant and whether or not "and" could mean "or." So I was asked to provide a letter to the board as to the legal research we did, which I believe indicates that "and" means "and," and it's different than "or." And therefore, both land, the land has to be located both within a line identified as a resource area in accordance with the Wetlands Protection Act and the Town of North Andover bylaw. And I believe it's agreed for the purposes of these applications that it is not a resource area under the Wetland Protection Act. So therefore, we believe that a finding would be appropriate, and the alternative we have applied for variance. At the last meeting, some neighbors showed up and had evidently submitted letters to the board as to, I believe, drainage issues, which we had not seen in advance of the meeting. I did check the website, and there doesn't seem to be anything that's been filed since our last meeting, other than what we were asked to file. And what we have filed was a drainage study, which the board asked, as well as plans, related to the drainage on lot. And Jack Sullivan is here to go over what he has submitted and answer any questions that the board may have. Okay, thank you.
Yep, so I can go over the drainage and what I was tasked with doing. So the first step in evaluating the drainage is I went out to the site, we did a soil probe to look at soil types and where the seasonal high groundwater table is located. When I did the soil probe, we found really good sands and gravels for this site, so that's good. That soil is good for infiltration. We also found a high seasonal, high groundwater table, so the groundwater table was 41 inches below the grade, the site grade. The site does slope from Salem Street back to the off-site wetland. It's not pronounced, it's relatively flat, but the general direction does flow back. So what we did is I looked at, as part of the drainage study, typically what you do is you look at the 2, 10, 25, and 100-year storm event. In this case, the 100-year storm event is 8.6 inches of rain in a 24-hour period, so that's a heavy rainfall. And what I did is I looked at the entire roof area of the proposed house, and so with the gutter system and roof drains, I was collecting the entire roof area of the house and conveying it to an underground infiltration system. So the infiltration systems, they're infiltrator units, they're arch, they're arch plastic chambers, and the gutters, the roof will drain to the gutters, they'll go down through the roof drains and into this underground infiltration system. I sized the system for the 8.6-inch rain event, and I sighted the infiltrators two feet above the seasonal high groundwater table. So DEP Stormwater Policy wants at least two feet of separation between the bottom of these infiltrator units and your seasonal high groundwater table. That provides the treatment of the water as it percolates through the ground. Based on a sandy soil, sand and gravels, there's a certain infiltration rate, it's called a rawls rate. I use that rawls rate to determine how many infiltrator units I need. In this case, I have 30 of these infiltrator units. I provide construction details showing, you know, the layout of this system, there's inspection ports, so I basically follow all of the DEP Stormwater Policy in sizing the system. So I think for this board, when it comes to conditioning this project, if it does get approval, you know, it's an easy condition in that whatever roof areas for the house, we show a house, not to say this is 100% the houses that's gonna get built on this lot, but now we would have a condition that the entire roof area would have to be picked up for the 100-year storm event, which I have done. Just for some numbers, because some of the neighbors were concerned with flooding and things like that, in the 100-year storm event, by adding these infiltrator units, we'll have over a 20% reduction in the peak rate of storm runoff and the volume of storm water runoff to that off-site wetland. So there'll be a 20% reduction. So really, I can only work with my lot. You know, if there's other areas in the watershed that drain to this, they're gonna continue to drain to this off-site wetland, but at least from this project that we're looking at tonight, we can say in a 100-year storm event, there's a 20% reduction moving off-site.
So just to translate to English, but did, correct me if I'm wrong, would that mean that in the event of a big rainstorm, whether or not that neighboring block floods, it will flood less with this than without it?
Correct. Okay, correct. And that's what I did. I did a analysis, I do a pre-development analysis versus post-development analysis. So the pre-development, no building, we're just looking at grass and woods. Post-development, now we have a driveway, we have a structure, and we have lawn and still some wooded area. So I do analysis, I submitted a detailed report showing how I did that analysis, and there'd be a 20% reduction.
Were any of the concerned abudders informed of these results?
Well, I submitted materials ahead of time. I don't know if they get posted online or people...
I was wondering if there'd been any communication between...
I didn't.
We have not had communication, other than I did confirm that it was all posted online.
Right. I didn't directly provide it to the abudders.
Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, so, forgive me, because this is totally out of anything I've ever done.
Okay.
So you say that with a proposed house, you will take care of any, this drainage system will take care of any overflow that comes off the roof, 8.6 inches over 24-hour period, and that the conditions that we heard from the other two homes will be better?
Correct.
And then the question is, is anything exacerbated by building the house itself?
But I didn't hear your last part.
Exacerbated by building the house itself. Is the grading changed in any way that would cause less or more water runoff to the adjoining properties?
No.
So everything else would stay the same?
Still would stay the same.
Okay.
So there's no ramifications by, like, a displacement from the foundation or anything like that?
No, because I've incorporated the entire roof area. So when they set this house, they'd set it above the groundwater table. We know the groundwater table's 41 inches below grade, and then whatever falls in that spot is gonna hit the roof, go to the gutters, go to the drain pipes, and out to the system, and that's two feet above the water table. So there's something called groundwater mounding. You may, within, you know, 10 feet of the system, the water table may raise an inch or two, but this infiltration system's well, it's well away from any property line. And that's a temporary impact.
And this would be the case whether they build the house you were postulating or whether they built some other house?
Right. Even if they built a bigger house, this board could condition the approval saying, you know, it has to be a drain system that's sized to handle the 100-year storm. I mean, what I show is a pretty good-sized house, you know, it's, the footprint is...
It's the one in this plan here, right?
Yeah. Let me just see what I have. You know, we're like 40 by 46, so it's a pretty good footprint we're showing here. And this lot can only, due to the width, you know, with the side setbacks and the zoner requirements, you can only go so wide. Could it go a little bit deeper on the lot? It could. But I would assume, you know, this is gonna be around the size that someone looks to build, I would think.
So I'm reminded of when my basement flooded in Needham in 1989, and it was weather very similar to what we're having now. It wasn't 8.6 inches in 24 hours, but it was day after day after day of rain until the ground could no longer absorb any water, and then my basement, and I had to go by a pump, and all my vinyl records got destroyed. It was a sad...
It's gonna end worse something now.
Yeah, I know. If it's not the storm of the century, but it's just the steady drip, drip, drip that we're getting right now, is this still the same result?
When did you flood? Was it in a winter condition?
No, it was early springs. I remember the strawberry crop got ruined.
Okay.
Those are the things that stick with you.
Because what I find with drainage, sometimes when there's frost in the ground, right, so around, outside the foundation, the ground's somewhat frozen, let's say, there's frost in, and then you get a heavy rain event, there's nowhere for the water to go. It tries to find the path of least resistance. Sometimes it moves towards people's foundations, finds a crack. I got some over the winter in my house. I'm like, you gotta be kidding me. So it can happen, but I don't see, this foundation would be over the groundwater table. We have really good soils. Usually I find people with poorly drained soils with a high groundwater table experience problems with this slow drip. Because the waters, if you have, like, clay soils, water can't escape that. With this, we're in sand and gravel.
Right.
So what, and if we're sighted above a groundwater table, the water will move quickly through a sand and gravel.
So would the soil be noticeably different on the two abutting properties that had concerns?
I don't know. It could be. Soil conditions can change rapidly in North Andover.
And if they did any grading or site work to make the drainage swell, they could have brought in soil from anywhere.
Right, it could be. Yeah, right, it could have been fill material, I don't know. But for our site, we have good soils.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I guess my assumption was that, given how close they are, the soil's probably very similar or the same. Why do they not get that kind of drainage relief that this kind of soil would provide? Is it because they don't have the drainage system in?
Well, it's a high, it's a high groundwater table, too. I'm 41 inches down, and then the grade steps off as you go back. It's closer and closer to the water table. You don't, maybe they don't have that lens of sand and gravel because the water table's higher. If you don't have a separation, you know, if you're close to the water table, you're not given that ability to infiltrate as well because it's more saturated if it's wet.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions from the board?
Yes, so, a summary of what I just heard, so let me paraphrase, and I want you to just check me on this one, then I wanna go deeper. So even in 100-year rainfall, what I heard was only that even though the construction is there, there would be less water that would be going into, call it the drainage area, than was there before. I think you said 80%, it would be a 20% reduction.
20% reduction.
Okay. So now, what I continue to think about this last meeting that we had, it was all about the abudders and the pictures, and what I'm trying to understand is, I'll call it the contribution factor of your lot and their problem. And so I understand the work that you did, you know, it's way above my head, but I understand how you've looked at this, but now, I'm still, I can still, I'm still looking at the flooded area, and I'm trying to understand to what extent, is there any extent that the Salem property is feeding or a part of the problem or not? So, and when I saw this, okay, I'm kinda, for me, I'm still in this, wow, I can see what Jack is telling me, but it doesn't answer the question that I'm, what I'm sharing here. I'm trying to, are you implicated there, so to speak, with the problem or not?
I think for this lot, we're showing, if we're showing a 20% reduction, it's a better situation, at least from our lot. Are they still gonna have flooding? Yeah, it looks like they would, but it would be less coming from this lot. I don't know, in the full watershed, whatever drains to this, to that ditch and out to the wetland, you don't know what other people are doing. Are they expanding their driveways? Are they adding a shed? Do they put in a pool? You know, you create more impervious surfaces, there's more runoff. At least we can say with this lot, going through this process, we put in something to try to mitigate the impact to that wetland area off-site. So this board has looked at, said, okay, we heard there's a drainage issue, we've asked for some drainage, they've come in, while they put in a drainage system now to handle an 8.6-inch rain event, at least on their property, I mean, we're dealing with this property, and we're showing a reduction, and we've added some mitigation for drainage. But will there still be flooding? If they show pictures of flooding, and I don't even know what rain events occurred then, they're still gonna have some flooding. We're not gonna solve their flooding problem. Because you're dealing with, not just this lot, you're dealing with a whole watershed that drains to this area, other properties doing things that maybe you don't even need a permit for. They're not before a zoning board, they're not before a conservation commission. They do big additions, they expand their driveways, they're doing things that they don't have to get a permit on if they're not within certain jurisdictions, and then more water going to this, there's a low point, it's going to the low point. But for this site, we've mitigated that. Like I said, we put in this drainage system, there's a 20% reduction in 100-year storm event. So at least for this lot, we provided some relief.
And just to be clear, it's a 20% reduction from its current runoff state?
Current.
So like, if nothing happened at all, this is what it is, and if we add the house, it's 20% less in rain events?
Correct.
So it was win-win?
Seems like it.
From what he says, win-win?
Win-win.
Right, win-win, right?
Yep.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, I believe we have Town Council, who is joining us via Zoom or Google Meets tonight, who would like to respond to some of the things that have been said. So I will let her take the floor.
Thanks very much. So, can you hear me okay?
Yep.
All right, thanks. So I was at the last meeting, and I just wanted to briefly discuss the, apparently, what was the initial point of discussion regarding the applicability of the town's bylaw. So there's agreement with respect to the proposition that the buffer zone land is a resource area in our bylaw, but not in the Wetlands Act. And I believe the petitioner's argument, the crux of it is, and this is where we get into the word "and," that it would need to be in both, or it doesn't apply in, the bylaw doesn't apply in North Andover. And I had prepared a memorandum quite some time ago, that I believe was already given to the zoning board, and it's an argument that I don't share that position at all. And if you were to adopt it, it would have the result of the town's zoning code essentially nullifying the express language and purpose of the town's Wetland Protection bylaw. And what my memorandum gets, walks through, is really the normal rules of statutory construction, which is, you know, if there is a way of harmoniously interpreting all of these, all of these different provisions, then we must. And the, I know that the "and" in this case is being construed as a connector of two different things. What I discussed in my opinion letter was that you can also look at "and" as the connector of two similar things, and that, in fact, follows the history of the zoning and the bylaw provisions. What I had noted, and I'll just read one paragraph from the, from the letter that was sent along, here, the applicable zoning provision was adopted in April of 1986, while the administrative records note that in April of 1987, the bylaw was amended to include a buffer zone in a wetland resource area. Wetland resource area in North Andover as including, and this is in sub-paragraph 6, any 100-foot buffer zone wetland area 1 through 5 listed above. Since the bylaw contains the more recent and more specific provision, its provisions must be afforded great weight. I mean, essentially, we have to, under normal rules of statutory construction, assume that when that bylaw was being created, that the zoning language that existed previously, that the drafters were aware of it, and it's illogical that they would have drafted a provision that then couldn't be applied to the zoning. So that is, in essence, the, what I have submitted forward, and I just wanted to make it clear, when I was at the last meeting, it, I know you had had, apparently, further submissions from the proponent on this, on this issue. It, there's also, regardless of where the board came down on this issue, there is still the ability to pursue a variance, but I just wanted to sort of address what has been discussed at the last meeting, and I think, again, in this meeting, with respect to these provisions.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any questions from the board?
Yes. How do you respond to that?
Very simple. We have a zoning bylaw in North Andover.
Could you speak up a little bit?
I'm sorry, yeah. We have a zoning bylaw in North Andover that residents of North Andover can read, and the zoning bylaw uses the word "and" in a sentence which would indicate that you need to have both a resource area under the local bylaw as well as a Wetland Protection Act. There's nothing in the zoning bylaw that says you have to figure out when this bylaw was enacted, what the Wetlands Protection Act said at the time it was enacted. Residents of North Andover should be able to rely upon the plain meaning and the plain words in a bylaw, because you need to know what you have to, what you have to build to. You have to know what you have in terms of land, how the zoning bylaw impacts land that people may own. And if people cannot look at the bylaw, and there's nothing in this bylaw that would indicate anything that has the history, anything, you know, that Attorney O'Connor indicates in her letter, someone reading the bylaw wouldn't be told you have to search the history of the bylaw. This is a bylaw that's clear, and residents should be able to rely upon the plain meaning. There's nothing not plain about the meaning of the bylaw. And I think it's important that people be able to rely upon it and not have to guess. And in this particular case, you read the bylaw, and if you didn't know anything about the history that was just, which was conveyed in turn of kind of a letter, you would say you need to have both. But what I suggest to you is, you shouldn't have to go into the history of every section of the bylaw to try to figure out what a plain sentence means in a bylaw, and that that's where I disagree with Town Council on this. Clearly, if the town wants to change something, you can, but, you know, it's been this way for a long time, and residents should be able to open up a bylaw, read a sentence in the bylaw, say, yep, I know what the sentence means, "and" means "and," and not have to try to do some sort of history of the history of the bylaw, of the history of the Wetlands Protection Act, and the history of the local bylaw, in order to understand what the word "and" means. And that's where I disagree with Town Council, because I don't think there's anything ambiguous about the sentence, and I don't think there's anything that would cause someone in town to feel that they can't rely upon the plain meaning of the bylaw section. And that's how I look at this.
Thank you, thank you.
I feel like I'm in the middle of a Supreme Court debate between textualists and originalists. If I might ask the Town Council and go in a completely different direction with more of a consequentialist one, what fraction of our conservation areas would be potentially impacted by the implications of this ruling? In other words, if we say that if it doesn't apply federally, then it doesn't, then we, then this statute does not, is not valid, what proportion roughly, I mean, I know you don't have the numbers in front of you, but like, are we talking a lot of protected areas? Are we talking three? Like, give me a sense of order, a magnitude.
Yeah, I wouldn't really know exactly how many, the scope of property that would be affected by that. I mean, I would, if I could, for a moment, just very briefly address the most recent comments, and if that's all right with the chair.
Yeah.
Sure.
The, you know, I don't disagree that the goal, obviously, is to have legislation that individuals can look at and can read, and that its meaning is apparent in what appears before us. But obviously, in this case, there was a very sort of technical argument that was advanced, in fact, by the petitioner, that the statute had a particular meaning as it related to the Wetlands Protection Act. You know, one of the things I noted in the opinion is that to adopt that position, the Wetlands Protection Act in the state was really just, it's intended to represent the minimum, the minimum protections, and towns are then encouraged to formulate whatever they think is appropriate to go beyond. If they, if they're satisfied with the language of the act, then you wouldn't see bylaws of this nature. But what communities have done is based on the board and the will of a, the will of a board, as well as likely, to your question, you know, the topography of the land, they oftentimes will go beyond the requirements of the Wetlands Protection Act. What I have argued in this, in this opinion, is that in doing that, it doesn't mean that it is that the bylaw is repugnant to the act. The bylaw is doing exactly what the act intend- The bylaw is doing exactly what the act intends bylaws of this nature to do, which is to work in conjunction with the Wetlands Protection Act, and for, in this case, the particular town of North Andover, you adopt your own bylaws that work in conjunction with the act, but also go beyond it. And what I was saying with respect to the meaning of the word "and" is that, yes, "and" can mean, as the petitioner has presented, the connection of two different things. And in, in their reading, the reading is, you have to have this, and you have to have that. What I was suggesting in, in my, in my opinion, was that that's not the only meaning of "and." "And" also means the connector of two similar things. And, and I think the bylaw and the Wetlands Protection Act are those two very similar things, and they work in conjunction. And that the bylaw is not at all intended to be repugnant to the, the act, the Wetlands Act, nor is it intended to be repugnant to the town zoning, that they're all meant to work together. And if there's a way of working together, then the normal rules of statutory construction apply. And the last thing I would say is that, again, you know, even though you, you would hope that you can take a look at a particular provision and know exactly what it means, oftentimes, that's not the case. And that's why we have these guiding principles of statutory construction. What I argue in my memorandum is that we are obligated to follow pre-established statutory rules of construction. And when you do that, when you look at, you know, is there a way of reading them in a harmonious way, so you don't nullify, say, a bylaw in this case, that the, that the most recent and more specific provisions apply, that when you do those things, then the conclusion is that it is not intended to be repugnant, it's intended to work with, with the act, and that they are the, "and" is just simply the connection of two similar things. And that for the town of North Andover, the buffer zone land is a resource area as recognized by the bylaw that would not be counted when calculating the area of property.
Town Council, I just want to ask, it sounds, and correct me if I'm wrong, the issue of nullifying the bylaw and your objection is primarily looking at whether or not the board overturns the denial, not addressing the issue of granting the variance. Am I correct on that?
Right, has nothing to do with, that's correct. Has nothing to do with granting the variance. Yep.
Any other questions from the board?
Do you want to rebut anything you say?
The only thing, the only thing I would say is, if you read the bylaw, there's no confusion in what the bylaw says. That, that's, and I don't, and I've said it a bunch of times, but, and I really believe it, that someone should be able to read the bylaw, there's no ambiguity.
And understand it.
And you can understand it.
And understand it.
Yep.
In plain, simple language. "And understand," is that where the word "and" comes in?
Alan.
We got, we have a lot of "ands." We have a lot of "ands." And the funny thing is, we've used a lot of "ands." I guess you never throw the word "and" out anymore without, without wondering it, but, but.
Maybe I shouldn't have used that.
But, 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 you know, when it, when it comes down to it, I mean, people should be able to read the bylaw. It doesn't, the bylaw is not ambiguous, and it says something. And I think it's clear what it says. And you shouldn't have to do a whole history of the Wetlands Protection Act to figure out what it really means. I think people in town should be able to understand it. And to the extent that it's inconsistent with what the Conservation Commission may want, you know, then there's certainly ways to remedy that. But, you know, there is a bylaw that, in, in my mind, is clearest of what it says. And you don't get into a, a what, a what-if, or, you know, a history of why it could be interpreted a different way when it's very clear on its face. I never thought I'd spend so much time on the word "and."
It's amazing what going to law school can do.
When I came back from one of the meetings, my wife goes, what did you discuss? I said the word "and."
Done the same thing. Okay.
I'm happy to answer any other questions. At the last meeting, if you remember, we talked about what part of the lot was, I mean, what part of the no-build zones and things like that. If we need to refresh the board on that, we're, I'm sure Jack is happy to do that, but we, we covered that at the last meeting as well.
Is there anything completely pressing on the board before I move on?
For questions, not comments.
For questions. Anyone from the public? Nope? Okay. So are we good?
I move that we close the public.
Well, hold on, hold on, hold on. See, I'm making sure we don't jump the gun here. Is there anything else you would like to add?
I don't have anything else to add. I don't know if my clients have anything they want to say.
Applicants. I want to make sure I've given everybody their, their fair opportunity. If you want to say something, just come up to the podium, please.
Sure.
Thank you.
You know, as John would like, as, as you were speaking, and as town council was speaking about the, you know, again, potential ramifications and what that might mean down the road, and other things that would potentially come up, please know that that's not, we're not thinking of that at all. You know, I started saying, oh, hmm, started thinking about national politics and various interpretations of government roles, and how you try to, how you can actively try to reduce them. And please know, that's not the intent at all. I, I hope that you would get that from the get-go.
That's why you have this wonderful board.
Yeah, right. And so that's all I would want to add to that. I, I would hope that there would be no idea that we were somehow interested in reducing the impact of government or private property, blah, 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 blah. Not, not even a piece of the calculus. Good. That's crossed mine as this was happening.
Lawyers can do that.
Yeah.
Okay.
I have a question for the chair.
No.
How are we going to handle, there's, there's two approaches being discussed.
So I'm going to ask that with them. Unless you want to throw out, because I was thinking about that.
No, I was asking, Mike, I had a recommendation while the previous meetings, that we handle the interpretation of the bylaw first, and the variance second, and split them up. But that is just my recommendation. You're the chair.
If we, if we did the variance first, then we wouldn't have to worry about making an interpretation.
Well, the problem is that, all right. The problem is that we have to address both things, because you put in for a finding, asking us to overturn the denial. You also, if we do not overturn the denial, you're looking for the variance. We have to address both of them. So as much as it might be nice to address just the issue of the variance, because that could, could ultimately give you what you're looking for, that still leaves overturning the denial up in the air.
Let me just, if I could just indulge the board for a minute, let me just, if I can just have five minutes to talk to my client for one minute?
Absolutely. Because what I, what I want you to talk to them about is, I'm looking at this as, I know that they came in, obviously, as a finding and as a variance. But the discussion is, as we've established, they, they meshed together so much.
No, I, I understand, and I, I just want to talk to them on one idea I have.
Absolutely.
I've learned not to give ideas without talking to clients.
You know what? I've learned that as well. If we can go off record.
I think, I, she was just asking me if you have to go into recess, you might have to go into recess.
Okay. So I'm going to put the board into recess. Can I have a vote?
I move that we.
Are there swings? Thank you. Did you get that? All in favor? Thank you. We are continuing the meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals for January 13th, 2023. Where are we at?
Okay, let me tell you what we're at, and try to explain what we're at. So, so the board can understand it. If, if the board was to, was to grant a variance, and assuming, you know, there's been no, no appeal taken to the variance, then we would have no problem requesting the withdrawal of the finding. Since we have two separate applications pending now, the board could act on the variance tonight, and we can give an extension of time for the board to act on the finding for, for 60 days or whatever, you know, date it is, depending upon when the decision is filed on the variance. Yeah, I, I, and we're, we're happy to do that. We're not looking to go forward on both, but if someone was to file an appeal, though it may be unlikely on the variance, then we would want to come back to the board and discuss the finding with the board. So I guess what I, what I suggest would be that the finding be continued. And actually, one question I have is, if the board votes on the variance tonight, and assuming the board grants it, when does it get filed? And when would the appeal period start on that?
So, Jen, how long do I have to sign the decision from the meeting?
I think two weeks.
So I have two weeks to review and sign and get it to Jen.
Okay.
I do try to do those sooner.
No, no, it's.
But I have two children.
I'm glad they take precedent.
Mommy hat always comes first.
I, no, I understand that. So what we're looking at is, let's say it's filed on the 30th, so we'd be looking at an appeal period that's running in the middle of July. So we'd look to continue the request for finding till the August meeting, because you're not meeting in July anyway.
Right.
And that, and that assuming there's no appeal taken on the, on the variance, then we would request that we withdraw, you know, without prejudice, the finding, and then we'll move forward on the variance. And if for some reason, however unlikely it is, that there's an appeal in the variance, then we'd come back and discuss the finding with you.
Okay. You don't see any issue with that, right? I don't. Okay. I'm just going to someone else, I've never had to split these.
Well, since we paid the file, since we paid the filing fee for those, we have the ability to.
Right.
Is there any, are there any waivers that we'd have to sign to get that?
He's already signed a time waiver, right?
I, I'd have to sign another time waiver on, on the finding. And, and I think I need to sign a time waiver, giving you time to sign the.
Well, I have the one, I have the one that you've signed for us, for tonight.
Right, so, but if the decision's not going to be filed for a couple of weeks, I'd probably have to give you one on the variance.
Jen?
Okay, so I, I didn't hear everything.
Okay.
So, but if you make a decision tonight, you have, we have two weeks to file.
Okay.
If you're continuing, we'll have to do another week or a time waiver.
Okay.
So I guess what I'm saying is, yep.
But if you're not continuing.
So applicant is wanting the board to address only the variance tonight. He's going on the assumption that if the board grants the variance, the finding isn't something that would have to be addressed. So he would therefore ultimately end up after the appeal period, in case any of Butters' appeal, after the appeal period on the variance, if granted, he would withdraw the finding. If there is an appeal, if there is an appeal filed on the variance, if granted, then he would be coming back to us in August to address the finding. That's what I've got, right?
That, yep. So we're doing well.
Right on the money. Okay. I like this. I like when I'm on the money. Okay. I don't have an objection to doing that, although I will ask, so then I'm going to assume, if the variance is not granted, you're going to want us to address the finding tonight.
Yep.
Okay.
Unless there's any more information the board would like on, on the question of the finding.
Well, I think one thing that might be helpful to the board, because I know we're dealing with a contiguous buildable and conservation, and there are issues, I believe Mr. Manzi, who is here as a citizen, is going to be able to clarify for the board a little bit better some of the terminology. So if Mr. Manzi, if you wouldn't mind stepping up and educating us a little bit before we close the meeting, because I want everybody to be able to have all of the knowledge we can have to make a proper decision.
Thank you, ma'am. So for the record, good evening, everybody. I'm Albert Manzi. I'm a member of the Conservation Commission. I have been since 1990. I live on Foster Street. I've lived here my whole life.
But you're not speaking for conservation tonight, I just want to make sense there.
I'm here, I'm here as, as a resident. I happen to be a member of the commission. I'm not representing the commission, I'm not representing the applicant.
You're Mr. Manzi tonight.
I'm just, just a guy that probably should be sitting down. So what I noticed, I've attended all the meetings, and what, what has been obvious to me is that you've been put into a situation as a board that has a tremendous amount of wetland implications, and it appears to be the driving questions that I've, I've heard asked. And one of the questions, and one of the things that's, that's troubled me a little bit about the, the process is the definition of resource area. And then when I heard council talk about the, the bylaw and, and, and the act, and one of the things that's happened during my tenure on the commission was, we, we, we established a 25-50, 25-foot no disturb, 50-foot no build zone as part of our bylaw. It's, it's more excessive than the act. The act has, has a setback of only about 10 feet. We have a 25-foot no disturb and a 50-foot no build. That's within, that's within that 100-foot area that's being referred to as a resource area. But in that 100-foot area, 50 feet is buildable, and we allow building on a regular basis up to 50 feet. And we then allow activity, again, within another 25 feet, and the final 25 is the no disturb zone, that's the no-go zone. So if Mr. Sullivan would, would have come to us with, with this plan, we'd look at the, we'd look at the resource area delineation, which is commonly referred to as a flagline, and that would be the zero point, that'd be the starting point, and we'd go 50 feet away from the flagline, a 20, I'm sorry, 25 feet away from the flagline would be the no disturb, the next 25 feet up to, up to, from 50 to 100 would, would be the buildable area. And so from 50 down to 25 is no build. This was appealed by TDJ Development to the Mass SJC. It was TDJ Development versus the town of North Andover is the site, and the town prevailed in the SJC, and that was one of the things that solidified our bylaw over the act. The appeal was that, no, you can't establish those setbacks. So when, where I'm going with this is, when, when the, when the representation is made that starting at the 100-foot area and calling that resource area, that contradicts the orders that we issue on every month at our meetings. We issue, we issue permits in orders that allow building down to the 50. If that were resource area, we would not allow it to be built there. I have, what classifies an area as a wetland resource area? Land that is predominant, has predominance of hydro soils, is inundated or saturated by surface groundwater at a frequency duration sufficient to support the prevalence of hydrostatic vegetation typically adapted for life in saturated soil conditions. That's not what we're talking about here. When, what's being referred to as a resource area is not that. It's upland. And if, if it were that, we wouldn't allow building on it. So when you, when you're looking at that map, when you're looking at that drawing, and you see the, the flagline, and it goes 25, and then 50, and then 50 to 100, that 50 to 100 is buildable area. It's not resource area. I understand what, what, what the bylaw says. If, if we, if we were to take that definition and hold it, you would be basically saying that every decision we've issued over the past 40 years is, is, is wrong. Because we, we allow building in that area all the time without a waiver. No waiver is required down to the 50. If they want to exceed the 50, if they want to, if there's, for some reason, they're within the, the no-build area, that requires a waiver, which requires an alternatives analysis. We're very stingy about giving those out. So when they're looking at, when you're looking at what, what constitutes contiguous buildable area, it ought to include that 50-foot area that we allow building in. Because if, if we're allowing building, and you're saying, but that's not contiguous buildable area, that, that, that's contradictory, that is beyond my comprehension. I don't understand how you, how you could, how it could be said. Have I made it better or worse? I don't know. I don't know if I confused you guys. I'm ready to.
Can we ask you one question?
Yes, sir.
So why do they have to go before you in that 100-foot, if it's okay to do?
It's jurisdictional. When, when you trigger, when, when you, when you come inside the 100, that's an area of jurisdiction which require, which requires them to file either a notice of intent, or an ANRAD, or an IDA. And then we, we then would deliberate on that, but we don't, it's, it's, it's a buildable area, as you know.
With, with approval from you.
With approval.
Yes.
But that, we approve that thousands of times. We don't deny it.
It's not automatic, though.
In, in the 50?
In the, within the 100, it's not automatic. They have to go before your board.
Well, yes, they have to, they have to demonstrate, they have to meet standards. One of the standards I mentioned one time was the, the pre and post runoff. The pre, the pre and the post have to match, they can't exceed. We have a lot, a lot, you're right, they have to, they have to meet standards, but I, I mean, I assure you, you've been around as long as. But I mean, I assure, you've been around as long as I have, almost. And we don't...
Wow.
We...
Don't worry, Paul. I think you look great. I think you look great. Don't worry about it. You're good.
That was just a curve ball. It's okay. He can hit the curve. So the point is that that's a buildable area, right? You're right. That's what triggers the permit. That's what triggers the application. But we don't deny, we don't deny applications in the 50, unless there's some real gross misconduct of some kind, either they're disrupting some type of groundwater or something. It would be very unusual for us to issue a denial in the 50.
I think I have a question, which is more related to the actual language of the law here, which is, you know, I understand what you're saying, is that you can build within 100 feet of wetland. And within 50 feet is where there's no build. I get that. But the definition of continuously buildable land is that, you know, according to the North Andover bylaw, excludes the word being the wetland resource area. So even though the 100-foot buffer is not all no build, is it still considered part of a wetland resource area?
In my opinion, no. Because if it's a resource area, as I read the definition to you from the Mass General laws, we don't allow any activity in a resource area. When you look at, again, I have to refer back to his drawing. When you look at the flagline, the resource area delineation, the delineation line is the line that separates the wetland from those three tiers of land that we talked about.
Right.
And there's no activity allowed, not only in the resource area, but we also have a 25-foot no disturb to protect the resource area. It's a buffer zone where there's no activity. You can't even cut the lawn. You can't cut a tree. You can't do anything in there. You have to stay out of there. That's what it sounds like. And then from 25 to 50, that's an area where some activities are allowed. You can mow the lawn. You can, you can put the garden in. You can do that stuff, but there's no structures.
Right.
The structures are from the 50 to the 100, buildable area.
Right.
Not resource area.
So the way that you guys outlined is that the buffer zone is from the edge of the wetland resource area extending beyond. So the wetland resource area is only that what is designated.
The resource area, in my experience, the resource area is the area on the other side of that flagline, which is, I'll have to go to it again. Which is, which is, is the area, the land on the other side of the flagline has a predominance of hydroric soils. It's inundated or saturated by surface and/or groundwater at a frequency and duration sufficient to support prevalence of hydrophytic, I apologize for that, vegetation typically adapted for life in saturated soil conditions. That is a resource area. We not only wouldn't allow building in a resource area under that definition, we don't even allow anybody to do anything in there.
Right.
The only activity that enjoys a, any discretion is agricultural. Agricultural is exempt under all conditions. But they still have to be in touch with and demonstrate that they have that. It's confusing, it's confusing, I understand. But, and maybe we have to, maybe we have to correct the bylaw. That could be...
We may have to.
That may, that may be, that's where I'm kind of getting this.
I got notes for that.
Well, I'm happy to...
On my forefront now. Thank you, Mr. Manzi.
All right. Thank you all.
Yeah, I just have a question. I'm sorry. John McLaughlin, again, I have a question. It's, I'm kind of listening to this for the first time, and it's, my mind's going ahead to all the ramifications immediately, as I'm sure yours are. But, you know, that, so that within the, that 25, there's kind of no activity, that no disturb. So that if like, if you built a fenced-in area for your dog within that 25, that wouldn't be cool?
You can't. You can't. That's basically, and that's part of conservation rules.
It's, take a look the next time you take a walk by.
Okay.
You know what I mean? Again, I appreciate the complications. I'm just trying to understand kind of how all the pieces, I'm trying to understand how all the pieces fit. I'm trying to understand about objections or concerns about the building, but, you know, kind of within kind of the full visibility of these bylaws. And wow.
I agree.
You know, so again, I just, I just wanted to kind of clarify for myself. Thank you.
Okay. So we are okay to close the open meeting for the variance? Am I have that right?
I moved that.
Well, oh, sure. Ron?
Absolutely.
Just so I have all the information.
I want you to have, I want you to be fully informed.
Okay. How far into that 100-foot area is the proposed building going to be?
Not at all.
We're not showing any work within the 100 feet of the wetland.
They're not in it.
Okay, good.
If we are in it, we'll be, we'd have to file with the Conservation Commission.
See, the...
Yeah.
But I have...
One of the properties outside the...
So Ron, the...
Okay.
Our work, our work area is outside the 100.
The issue is, is that the work area is...
And the wetlands are...
The whole property is outside of a property?
No.
No.
No. The building, the house that's going to be built.
That's not the question I'm asking.
But the whole property isn't outside of the wetlands.
Right. So some of the properties in it, that's why we're having this discussion.
Some of the properties in the 100-foot buffer...
I don't think that's what we just discussed.
Okay.
Guys, guys, guys.
I'm asking the question.
Okay.
I think it may have gotten lost, but there's no wetlands on this lot. The wetlands is on a budding property.
The only thing on your property are the various levels of setbacks.
That's correct.
Which are not, what we just heard, are not considered the resource area.
Well, that's one person's opinion.
Yeah.
As a citizen.
Getting snappy.
And next question, just for confirmation.
Okay.
No other variances are needed? Left, right?
That's not going to be for me to answer. That's counsel.
Other variances?
No.
Okay.
For this proposed structure?
No. We made all set front, side, rear, lock coverage.
That was my recollection, that no other variances were needed.
Right.
And last question is an easement issue. Do we need to include that in our rule?
Why? What easement?
Driveway.
The driveway?
The driveway, the way this was laid out, there's a piece of the curved driveway that would require an easement, unless it's moved.
Nope. That's not our problem.
Okay. Not our problem?
It's not our problem. Because what's ultimately going to happen is that's going to become a problem for the homeowner when they decide to go sell a lot. That's going to be, don't take this the wrong way, please, their issue.
Okay. Fine.
If easements are needed, they'll have to deal with easements.
If they're going to address that issue, because they're going to think ahead about potentially selling one, living in one, selling both, that is 100%. But you just gave them the thought if they weren't thinking about it, so.
And just to add to that, if they can either remove a portion of that crushed
stone driveway, if they wanted to create an easement, they could. That doesn't go through any sort of board.
That's not us.
We could do an easement plan. Mark could record it. We'd have the easement. It doesn't go to the planning board. It's just through the registry.
That's a really expensive lawyer's job.
Those are my questions. Thank you. Thank you for indulging.
Anytime, anytime. I know these applicants want this done and over with.
I move that we close the public comment. No, all right. I'm trying, I'm trying.
So the relief variance is 3,350 feet. So now, based on what I just heard Mr. Manzi say, my question, as he described the 100 and the 50 and so on, of that 3,350, how much of the 3,350 is in the, is any of it in the 25? Is it in the 50 to 100?
That's for the applicant, not Mr. Manzi. Just, you know.
I'm sorry?
I'm assuming you're asking that to the applicant?
Yeah. Well, I'm...
It has to be asked to the applicant.
Okay. So I'm, my question, I'll repeat again, is of the 3,350, how does, how does that, is that tiered? How, line that up with what I just heard Mr. Manzi describe? Okay, I can hit some of it. The wetland's entirely off-site. The 25-foot buffer, the no-touch zone, we call that the no-touch zone, is all off-site. So the only thing that comes onto this site, and it only comes on slightly onto the site, is the 50-foot nostructure buffer from the wetland. I don't have the percentage of that. But that's, that's the only local conservation bylaw that would impact this lot is the 50. Swag for me, 3,350, is it 50% of it? I mean, give me something to chew about here.
So, maybe I can ask the question a slightly different ways. On the map here, where you show where the 100-foot buffer is, and it comes and kind of cuts off the entire back L there.
Yeah.
And then that checkered area between the 100-foot and the 50 is the area that would have to be included for that variance, right?
Right.
So that, that middle dotted line that has the checked area between the 50-foot and itself is the variance line. So that 50-foot is well beyond back towards the property line from even the variance. So you give, maybe not a specific numbers, a percentage, but pretty clear visual of how much of that is excluded if you just take the 50-foot buffer and not the 100-foot buffer.
Right. I think you...
Does that make sense?
You explained that well.
Okay. It's like, so the 50-foot buffer is just this one little strip along the back of the property, it sounds like.
Does that answer us, Steve? I know it's not a percentage, and it kind of just gives you more visual than numbers.
Well, I guess my takeaway is that there is nothing in the 25, I'll call it that protected area, but there is some of the, if you would need to enter, to, in order to achieve, or, I mean, if the variance was granted or in order to achieve the continuous building area, you would have to enter into the non-built area to a certain percent.
No.
No. Just the 100-foot.
Just the 100-foot.
Just the 100. And if you really look at this from an easy zoning spot, that 50-foot nostructure buffer is right at the rear of the lot. In this zoning district, there's a 30-foot rear setback requirement. Nothing's getting, you'd have to be 30 feet off the rear lot line. You're not even going to be near the 50-foot buffer zone. You're going to be well outside of that, if you follow what I'm saying. There could, there could be, you couldn't put a structure back there.
I think Mr. Saidi's asking a different question, which is just the variant, the 3,000 square feet of the variance, how far into this buffer zone does it eat? And the answer is it eats into the 100-foot buffer zone, but not, not into the 50-foot buffer zone. If you, if you granted everything down to the 50, it would be more than that 3,350. Do I get to do it now?
I think you can try.
All right. I move that we close the public comment.
Let Alan take the second on that.
Alan, take the second.
I second that motion.
Can I have a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Alan, you're up.
We're going to have the discussion amongst the board members?
We have to do that?
Yeah, we have to do that.
All right, everybody remember, we're just discussing variance, not finding. So the variance allows for them to build, but it is not doing anything involving the finding.
Correct.
So...
I mean, to me, the, this is going to sound a little, a little weird, but like, if I'm looking at this map, whether or not this wetland area is part of the continuing buildable area, it doesn't really change the dimension of the property relative to the neighbors. Right? It doesn't make it more crowded or less crowded. And I, I understand the concerns about drainage, and I feel like the applicant has addressed those. And so I'm, I'm very comfortable granting this variance.
And it keeps us out of the sticky wicket of having to...
Address the finding?
Yeah.
You can thank the applicant later for that.
I would, I would agree. I mean, what you address is that you're not going to make a problem for the neighbors worse. You might make it better. There's no other variances that we need, and you're just, as Mr. Manzi explained, into an area where they grant building all the time. So I'm very comfortable with that.
Frank, can I?
I'm good with it.
Alan.
I'm good. He used the words win-win for me.
Love those words.
Oh, it's the truth. I mean, the adjustment thing, and it's going to be beneficial.
Can I ever present something in front of this forum? Just got to tell my lawyer, say win-win three times. Don't say "and" ever.
Don't say "and." Save anything.
Just an observation, not a question here, but I'm in with the business that we've covered tonight. And then also, I'm going to say the fact that there is, we've not heard, we've not received from the Butters who attended last time. So I'm not aware of any further feedback or attendance tonight. Is that checked?
That is my understanding, and I'm going to make the assumption, which isn't always a smart thing to do, that they raised the issue to us about drainage. They knew that drainage was now going to be addressed. They knew what the expectations were in order for us to be satisfied with the drainage. The report has been posted, what the applicant provided to us regarding the water and the runoff. It's very possible that the neighbors saw that they're now doing something to better benefit. We didn't, I didn't get informed that we had any questions or comments. So I'm going to assume that the neighbors have been satisfied.
Thank you.
I do have one question, just a procedural question, which is, I'm assuming that we would all like to, if we vote for the variance, make a contingency on them having this drainage plan that they presented?
So when...
Is that possible? How do we do that?
So when Alan reads it, one of the things is that it gets based off of the plan that they have provided that's dated.
Right. And if they change it, they have to come back?
If they're trying to alter this, good luck if they get caught, because if they don't come back in front of a board, they have problems.
Gotcha. So if they did change it, they would just have to come back? Is that the idea?
Or, or as, were you getting at, making the condition that if the building footprint changes, then the drainage retention area will...
Right.
Be revised accordingly?
Yeah. If they decide that the drainage in this is too expensive and want to downsize it, they would have to come back.
That's not going to work.
Sure, right.
Sure, right. So they would have to come back, right?
For instance, if the roof, if the area, if the roof area got bigger and you needed more chambers, then they would increase the number of chambers.
Accordingly.
Accordingly, yeah. So I think that's a condition.
Oh, and they wouldn't have to come back, but they would, but they could just-
We make it a-
Show that they've done that.
Yeah, we make it a condition.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
And that goes in the ruling that the chair puts out.
Perfect. And James, unfortunately.
Duck tape.
Duck tape. I like duck tape. I mentioned I have two kids, right? I really need to be careful what I say. I take things too seriously. Okay. Are we ready? We're good? Okay. You're up. So just addressing the variance.
The second paragraph.
Yes, the second paragraph.
Okay. I got it. I make a motion that we, the zoning board, I make a motion to grant a request for a variance pursuant to the town, North Andover Town, whoa, let me start over again. I make a motion that we grant a variance pursuant to the town of North Andover zoning bylaws, section 195-7.1A contiguous building area, CBA, and section 195-10.8A and B, the R3 zoning district, for the purpose of constructing a new single-family dwelling on a vacant lot. Specifically, applicants have requested CBA needing a relief variance of 3,350 square feet, example 13.4 percent. The CBA proposed is 15,400 square feet, example 61.6, and the CBA required is 18,750 square feet, example 75 percent. And I'd like to make mention and read into the decision, plan submitted by the applicant, there's two pages prepared by Sullivan Engineering Group, dated March 8, '23, revised 4/26/23. And there's two sheets, and it shows the house, and the, what would be the property, the drainage area?
6/2.
The inspection, yeah, the drainage.
Oh, and another revision in 6/23. Thank you for seeing that. That's it.
I guess I will start with an aye.
Do you want a second?
Oh.
Second.
Thank you. I'll start with an aye. Laura?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Alan.
Aye.
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 We did too many votes here.
I think we might have, I think I might have added people. I was very, I've been very inclusive tonight.
It's good to know it's universal.
You got seven out of five.
You got seven out of five. So you're good to go.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Before you get up?
I'm going to do an extension on the finding.
The board has to make a vote-
Oh, yeah, we have to vote on-
To continue. So can I have a vote to continue?
I move that we continue the finding.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Can I have a vote?
Aye.
Please sign the waiver. Hopefully, we do not see you.
You will see me anyway at the next meeting. I have some other matters on, but hopefully I'll be back here signing a, asking to withdraw the finding.
That I'm looking forward to.
I think you'd be happy to see those, you know. I would have a vote for.
It's not going to be an end.
We already did an.
We already did an. What's ironic is, you know, hearing Mr. Manzi talk about TDJ Development versus North Andover, actually, I represented TDJ Development in my face.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That probably goes back close to 25 to 30 years.
More like 40.
More like 40, so time flies.
The important, the big question is, is do you have a case in a tax book?
I'm sorry?
I said, do you have a case in a tax book?
We actually have, we have one case that actually went all over the place. It went from Bankruptcy Court to U.S. District Court, to U.S. Court of Appeals, back to the SJC, and then back to the U.S. Court of Appeals.
That is always fun.
So those are always fun. They just kept going on for years. So, thank you very much.
I'd like to say thanks to him. I had no expectation that this would go this long. And again, thanks for what you do.
Not a problem. Good luck.
I wanted to thank the local community.
I thank the local office for their patience and their understanding and all the work that went into doing this. So thank you very much. I know this was not easy, probably very trying, but thank you.
Thank you.